Okay, I'm calling this meeting back to order. The Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. Item 4.1, Pledge of Allegiance. Superintendent, do you mind guiding us?
Yes, thank you. Please stand. Ready? Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, student members. Broadcast statement.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Carlson Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, May 8th at 9:00 a.m. and Monday, May 9th at noon. It is also webcast at Metro14livedosaccounty.net and can be viewed on Metro Cable 14's YouTube channel. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone and addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items that are not on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Thank you so much. Item 4.3, Stellar Students. Ms. Carla Flores Castro, I'll just get you in the front row. Would you like to come up real quick? Carla is a freshman at Luther Burbank High School, and tonight she will be introduced by our student members.
Carla was nominated by the after-school program manager, Diego Estrada. Diego reports Carla is embodiment of what after-school programming is about. Carla has been consistent in her attendance and participation in programming, and she is exceptionally kind to her peers and staff. She has been willing to engage in the different types of activities made available to her. Carla is currently working the 7th-period art class, and the current project is to create a mural onsite to beautify their urban garden.
Carla, would you like to say a few words?
Yep, it's on. Just bend it down a little bit. There you go. Oh, actually, press the button for me. There should be a button.
There? Okay. So, I want to say thanks for this because this is my first time actually meeting the board, so I'm a little bit nervous. And I also want to thank you for the award.
Well deserved. We have a certificate for you. We're going to come down real quick. What was that? Yep, we can all go down there. Yep. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations again, Carla. All right. Item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
Good evening, President Pritchett. There are four announcements coming out of closed session this evening. The first, the board approved a settlement agreement related to special education services by a vote of six to zero with member Rhodes absent. Second, by a vote of six to zero with member Rhodes absent, the board took action to adopt the proposed decision of a hearing officer to dismiss a permanent classified campus monitor effective immediately. The last two announcements will come from the superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. I'm very pleased this evening to announce that by a unanimous vote, six to zero with board member Rhodes absent, the board approved the appointment of Mr. Eugene Stavall as principal of Matsuyama Elementary School. Congratulations, Mr. Stavall. Secondly, by unanimous vote of six to zero with board member Rhodes absent, the board also approved the appointment of Ms. Joanna Evans as principal of John Still K8 School. Congratulations, Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Superintendent. Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. Can I get a motion? Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Item 7.0, Public Comment. Ms. Moretti? Or actually, who knows how many we have?
We have--
Mr. Heap?
Yes, we have four people on public comment this evening, beginning with David Alamon, followed by Taylor Kayata, David Fisher, and Mo Kashmiri.
All right. Mr. Alamon, good evening.
Good evening. David Alamon, school social worker at the Connect Center, former school social worker with child development. I just want to ask the board, you know, have you, has there been a presentation on your plans for next year preschool program?
Board members, we have a presentation slated for May 19th, our second board meeting of the month, and we will be giving an update on our programming.
Are you bringing in TK, more TK programs to the district?
We'll have that information in our presentation on the 19th.
Okay, yeah. Well, my concern is that if you are bringing in TK, how are you making room for them?
We'll have that information--
Do you have any comment on that? Okay. Well, I understand, and I talked to the LCAP, DILAC, and the African-American Parallel Board this week, or actually, last week, and I asked them, did they know anything about the cuts that happened in 2018 and 19? No clue. And I asked them if they knew of the cuts that are possibly coming this year, and especially the cuts that are coming out of it from the Head Start program, okay? So last week, when I spoke, the child that got the awards, all their children, the family, there were Head Start families. This young lady, Head Start, and I wish we had time for her mom, Maria Castro Geta, because she participated all the way up to a parent council member at the county level. You're replacing Head Start. Is the war on poverty over? Huh? It isn't, is it? And this district knows it. And you know what? You're bringing in an inferior program. You're bringing in one that you're having to reinvent. Head Start, we proved what we can do. In this district, we were the stellar program. The year before those cuts came, where you cut half of the program, we had 1,200 slots for Head Start, and it was allowed to cut of 599 is what's the proposal. Thank goodness SEDA only took 595. That's ridiculous. We target the most disadvantaged families in this district, and you're eliminating it. And that year, the year before, we were in a federal review, and I've been through five of them. And that year, at the closing of the review, one of the reviewers gave all these acclamates to the county, because they have to say county. Afterwards, she came to one of our nurses and said, you know all those things we said? It was about your district, SAC City Unified. You know, if you look at SAC City and if it had a crown and all these gems on it, either, and you probably don't even realize that preschool was one of the gems on there, and it's been plucked out. You need to consider what you're doing towards Head Start, towards the preschool program. You're reinventing some. It's demolished right now.
Thank you, Ms. Alamon. Mr. Cicada?
Kayata, sorry. I got your first name and your last name instead. I got you. So just my question tonight is about the instructional time recovery. As a parent, and a parent who talks to other parents, we're kind of concerned about what's going on with this, and it seems like the news updates have stopped abruptly. So we'd really like to know, has there been progress? What's the plan going to be? What kind of instruction will there be if we end up having these extra days or these extra hours? I don't know if, when I talk to parents, there's a concern that, okay, I'm going to change my whole summer plans after finally coming out of a lot of COVID lockdown, and then we're going to be put into a class where we're just going to watch movies because the teachers don't have time for prepare. So really, we just want to know what's happening. Speaking to Dave Gordon's comments in our last meeting, we have declining enrollment in this district. We know this is happening. Demographics are one thing, but confusion and not knowing what's happening, this is another reason parents leave the district. So really, if we could get some updates, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
Good evening. David Fisher, President Sacramento City Teacher Association. After we reached our agreement with the district on Sunday, April 3rd, 2022, we were cautiously hopeful that we would be able to maintain, move immediate if incremental improvements in our relationship. But a couple of recent developments suggest that we, maybe we were over enthusiastic. First, with regard to the makeup minutes that was just mentioned, the district has reverted to its pre-settlement behavior, this lack of urgency and focus on acting in a punitive matter rather than working with us. For example, on August 25th, we gave the district a comprehensive proposal to address the lost instructional days. It took the district eight days to develop a response. Eight days. Yesterday, exactly 30 days after we reached our settlement, the district introduced two brand-new demands or poison pills into the proposal that has led many to wonder if the district prefers to pay the $47 million fine. I don't believe so, but the actions speak otherwise. By the way, we immediately caucused and gave the district another counterproposal that dealt with all their concerns about how we deal with the staffing and made a move forward. District spokesperson had no idea when they would be getting back to us. Secondly, in the fall, we made a proposal to work together to develop a community schools proposal to the California Department of Education. In a subsequent conversation with the superintendent, we specifically tried to discuss working together on community schools. However, rather than respond, the district went on its own and with no input from us and who knows from who, to apply for a multimillion-dollar grant. The guidelines from the CDE specifically state that it strongly recommends district leaders work with their local unions and their stakeholders and educators. SAC City, under your leadership, has earned a reputation for top-down, non-inclusive, non-cooperative leadership. Several of you have stated you want things to be different, and yet we see the same behavior week after week. Actions speak louder than words. It's time to act. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kashmiri?
Hello, everybody. My name is Mo Kashmiri. I'm also a parent of a 5th grader at William Land Elementary School, and I'm also running for SAC County Board of Education. As we talked about last week, what last, a couple weeks ago when I came, I was urging you to work with us to try to figure out ways to bring in new revenue to this district. In terms of federally, we could be fighting to make sure special ed is fully funded. In terms of at the state level, we should be fighting together to make sure that the COVID funding is made long-term. And I also talked to you about Prop P, the Prop P lawsuit, which now says that we can raise revenues by 50% vote as long as we do it through a ballot measure. Unfortunately, I haven't heard back, and we're still asking for the same things. Number two, I've asked that you focus more on collaboration instead of conflict, and we're hoping that you will work with the educators and the staff to work something out. It's just disappointing that we still haven't heard whether or not our kids are actually going to have an extended school year or not. It's unacceptable. And finally, I'm also urging you to, again, take action to protect our kids. We only have eight years to avoid the worst effects of climate change. And I recently talked to a SMUD board rep who said that they had given the district some options around ways they could get some funding, but that the district never turned in any of the applications. So again, I'm urging us to make sure that we have a climate action plan that gets us to safe, healthy, and carbon-free schools by 2030, and we could be doing that through getting more money, putting more solar panels on, getting more electric buses, which there's currently grants out from the state to do that. But I feel like we don't have a plan to get there, and if we don't have a plan, then our plan is to fail. So again, I'm asking this board to step up and do the right thing, as always, and I'm hopeful that you will do so. Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Kashmiri, I kept your water bottle in your mouth.
Thank you.
It's safe. I kept it for you since the last meeting. I didn't want to forget to give it to you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Any additional public comment?
We do have one more. Terrence Gladney?
Mr. Gladney, good evening.
Good evening. Sorry, I missed the public comment on the stellar student. I did want to acknowledge the stellar student, Carla. I had the opportunity, just sort of by happenstance, I was browsing Facebook, and Burbank was advertising that they were providing plant starters for community gardens and school gardens. I believe board member Rhodes and former board member Myveng had purchased some to distribute, which made that possible. And I was kind of upset because I wasn't in town when they did an initial sale, which was a fundraiser for the program. But by visiting the school site and going to pick up these starters for our John Cabrillo garden, I was able to meet Mr. McPherson, take a tour of the facility, and I really felt robbed of the privilege of knowing that such a beautiful thing exists in our district before then. You know, we talk about uplifting programs, and the narrative that exists for school sites such as Luther Burbank hasn't always been the best, to put it nicely. But we put other programs and school sites on pedestals because of the zip codes that they exist in or the populations that they serve. We uplift them. And it is unacceptable not to have the program that exists at Burbank, which is a CTE program, a career pathway program, which aligns directly with providing different outcomes for the students that represent the predominant amount of underserved, underprivileged students in our district uplifted. I feel that I know this district. I've been probably to at least 75% of the school sites that exist, you know, whether closed or open. And if I didn't know, then I'm thinking, how many other people do not know? I know when I brought it up in our LCAP meeting, no one knew that it existed, and I feel like that's a travesty, and it's really not honoring students that we're saying are stellar. It's not giving them the spotlight that they deserve for the work that they do. Just through taking a flat of plant starters to another school campus, we've instantly provided connections for those students that are elementary students to know that there are great things that exist in our district. So if that's what we're focused on, we all need to do a better job of spreading the word and uplifting these great programs. So I salute Mr. McPherson, board member Rhodes, and students like Carla that are doing the great work that just gets overlooked. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Item 8.0, Board Workshops, Strategic Plan, and Other Initiatives. 8.1, Approval Letter Supporting Clara, E. Claire Bailey Studios for Performing Arts Proposal for State Funding. Member Garcia?
Thank you, President Pritchett. In the board agenda, you will, or packet, you will see a letter that is before you, and I am asking for your support in approving this letter. This letter is a letter of support for Clara's request of $3.4 million in state budget dollars for the courtyard studio project. As some of you may know, Clara is a nonprofit organization for the arts and is home to diverse cultural organizations, including music, dance, and art, who receive space at below-market rates in exchange for free arts outreach programming to Title I schools. Today, the arts education program serves more than 3,600 students here in SAC City Unified, and that's per year. Clara also serves an additional 12,000 students in the region, as well as over 84,000 students in Elk Grove Unified, so their reach has really extended beyond our district here. So the proposed courtyard studio project will include an outdoor classroom and performance space, and it will allow expanding summer camps where 50% of the campers are SAC City Unified students who attend on a scholarship, and reinstate the teaching artist space exchange, where artists in our community exchange time teaching at our very own schools for free, resulting in even more students in our schools to have access to the arts. So with that, I ask for your aye vote in approving this letter to support Clara's request to, to our state leaders for request, for state funds for the courtyard studio project.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Do we have a public comment, Mr. Heap?
We do not.
We do have some letters, but thank you.
Mr. Gladney, did you turn in a public comment card?
8.2.
Go ahead. You can come up and speak and then give it to them.
Sorry. Below-market rate is an understatement of the, basically what they're paying. I believe this is like a, what is it, like a 40-year? It's a long-term contract for basically like a dollar a year. I know that when that was, and it was, to be honest, an underhanded transaction, which led to other community partners coming through and saying, is this the norm for this district? Whether facilities exist to which we can get such a handout. 3,600 students in our district represent such a small fraction. 100 students on scholarship of 3,600 does not represent the proportionality of underserved students in our district. Where's the analysis? And it's not necessarily to deal with this, but the greater problem as a whole of us handing over taxpayer-funded facilities to organizations that say they're going to support our children. 100 students is not proportionate to the number of underserved students. We heard at the last meeting it was 70%, right? We'd like to uplift that number. Doesn't take a math major. I'm not going to take my time to do the math. What is the return of investment? What is the current market rate at which they're receiving a discount? I see far more students being served outside of our district boundaries than in our district. What is our priority? I thought it was the 70% students. I would like to, in addition to this, request that we bring forth a resolution that requires that there is a proportional amount of investment in our kids within these boundaries. We have enough subsidization of students that come from outside of SAC City to receive benefits, and we have enough people in this district that aren't served. Scholars, babies, young people, future leaders, like board member Zane. Our dollars, whether real dollars or virtual dollars in this case, speak to our priorities. So what I see on this paper is that we're allowing an organization that prioritizes non-SAC City students to get fat off of our backs. And if that's what you guys stand for, then keep up the great work.
Board comment, Member Morowski.
Thank you, Member Garcia, for bringing this forward. I had the opportunity to visit and see the vision, and, you know, I think it's an excellent time in the state budget to invest in some one-time projects that will serve our community for many years to come, so happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional votes? All right.
Yeah. Oh, I hit the wrong button.
Yes. Okay, Member Phillips?
Sorry. Do we have any idea where this construction is going to take place? I hear the courtyard, but--
It's onsite.
Onsite where?
The Fremont building. It's Clara. It's right on like 24th and N in Midtown, so they're requesting for state dollars, not district dollars. If they get the funding, then they'll, I don't know when the project will be slated to be under construction.
Okay. Maybe, and I'm just thinking, maybe this says something for me, that being from Oak Park, there's a lot of nonprofits and things that come in, and they want to assist, but they don't. So, you know, we have millions of them, it seems like, in our area, and I understand that this is something that might be beneficial to our students. But again, every time I hear Mr. Gladney talk, and he mentions percentages, it worries me that there will be no trickle down. I mean, a lot of things that if we're going to build, if we're going to be part of an area that's going to, I guess, offer services to our students and our students can't get there, what are we really doing? So I just, Fremont Center is something that's new to me, so I guess I'm going to have to go find the Fremont building today and see how far it is away from, you know, certain areas, but--
They're currently serving our students in our schools, many in your area. So they are, you know, they do have artist residents who go to schools. They also host, especially during the pandemic, online educational programs. They do have summer camps again. They, and they will subsidize field trips so that our students can partake in theater with the outdoor, the outdoor space. But again, these are state dollars that they are requesting, and they're just simply asking for our support in their request.
Board members, I'm wondering if, I do know because I've seen these reports in the past, I'm looking to our chief academic officer, Deita. I know that Clara does send us reports showing the number of students that have benefited from SAC City Unified when they have artists or dancers, and I, we could follow up certainly and send a B.C. just so that there is greater clarity in terms of how many students from SAC City are served by that organization, if that might be helpful.
And the demographics of those students.
Demographics, absolutely. So we can work with Clara on that.
Thank you. And Superintendent, maybe it's possible that we highlight that work on our social media pages. That way, the community can see as well the work that is being done. All right. With that, we'll take a motion to approve the letter supporting Clara.
Second.
A motion in a second. Student preferential vote.
Aye.
All right. Superintendent, roll call.
Member Pritchett.
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Rhodes, I'm sorry, Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Member Phillips?
I will abstain as I don't have enough information.
All right. Item 8.2, Local Control and Accountability Plan Update. Mr. Stephen Ramirez-Fong, good evening. It's nice to see you in person.
Yes, good evening. It's a privilege to be back. I joined the district not too long before COVID, and so I had few opportunities to be in the room. Good evening, board, superintendent, colleagues in public. Again, it is a privilege to be back here in person and speaking with you and be able to see your faces. We're here tonight with an update on the Local Control and Accountability Plan, also known as the LCAP. My name is Stephen Fong. I work in the district's Continuous Improvement and Accountability Division, and just wanted to acknowledge here the second slide of acronyms. I really want to appreciate district leadership for pushing to make this a routinized part of presentations. Many of these acronyms in the presentation are spelled out, but they're also here for someone that wants to reference them all in one place. And you'll see some of these same acronyms, of course, in the LCAP student groups, as well as some of our programs, and some of the state, some of the state pieces. So tonight, really, the purpose is to give you a sense of where we are at in our LCAP process, in the overall development timeline, as well as really discuss portions of continuity, and then also things that are new, and be able to feature some of those new pieces that are still in progress. And some of those would include our new goals that we'll share later in the presentation. So we always stop to center ourselves around the core value and the guiding principle. I think there may be an unintended animation here. There we go. We see this so often that we always try to anchor ourselves. One anchor for me tonight is this idea of recognizing inequity, interrupting inequity, and there's a connection there to some of the goals that we'll see that are proposed, as well as some of the proposed revisions to the framing of our metrics. We also anchor into an LCAP summary statement. This is a portion of language from our existing LCAP, and it's been used by some of our district leaders in their prioritization process. And it is a lot of text, but, you know, it's there as well for reference for folks that are reading this later, and really connecting back to that anchor and our core value and guiding principle, and really point folks out to the last sentence--
I work in the district's Continuous Improvement and Accountability Division. And just wanted to acknowledge here the second slide of acronyms. I really want to appreciate district leadership for pushing to make this a routinized part of presentations. Many of these acronyms in the presentation are spelled out, but they're also here for someone that wants to reference them all in one place. And you'll see some of these same acronyms, of course, in the LCAP student groups, as well as some of our programs and some of the state, some of the state pieces. So tonight, really, the purpose is to give you a sense of where we are at in our LCAP process, in the overall development timeline, as well as really discuss portions of continuity and then also things that are new and be able to feature some of those new pieces that are still in progress. And some of those would include our new goals that we'll share later in the presentation. So we always stop to center ourselves around the core value and the guiding principle. I think there may be an unintended animation here. There we go. We see this so often that we always try to anchor ourselves. One anchor for me tonight is this idea of recognizing inequity, interrupting inequity, and there's a connection there to some of the goals that we'll see that are proposed, as well as some of the proposed revisions to the framing of our metrics. We also anchor into an LCAP summary statement. This is a portion of language from our existing LCAP, and it's been used by some of our district leaders in their prioritization process. And it is a lot of text, but it's there as well for reference for folks that are reading this later and really connecting back to that anchor in our core value and guiding principle and really point folks out to the last sentence in the first paragraph, really looking at the student groups who have continued to demonstrate performance gaps over time. That statement really speaks to where some of these new goals are being derived from that we'll feature later in the presentation, as well as looking at how we're considering reframing some of our metrics, really looking at that student group-specific gap. You know, for someone that's just hearing about the LCAP for the first time, we do share it's a community document. You know, we talked a lot about how the composition of the current LCAP owes a huge amount to the input over the past, really going back two years, but it also evolves, right? So we're going to talk a little about the fact that we're in a three-year cycle, but every year there is a new LCAP, and every year we come back to the LCAP process. And another interesting piece from this presentation and this slide in particular is this connection or intersection, we'll say, between the vision aspects of the LCAP and also the accountability aspects of the LCAP. It is a place where we set forth our goals, where we're trying to move as a district, but it's also where we have to ground ourselves in the actual expenditure, the actual process of showing how we spend our dollars and where we direct our activities.
I have someone in the front. No one's...
You're okay to proceed? Okay. So for this particular LCAP, we did want to summarize what's in it. The last few years have been, you know, as we all know, circumstances of many exceptions and one-time activities. You know, as COVID came in 2020, everything for the LCAP has changed, and there were some new plans that came forth that changed what happened that year. We actually postponed the LCAP to the following year and worked on some one-time plans. Going into 2021, we then had the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, and we had some other expanded learning opportunity grants that arose, and that changed the templates and it changed the timelines. So for this current year, we are back to now one template that, when we say it's the 2223 LCAP, contains our plans for next year and also our analysis of the current year in one template. And then we also are mandated to include that supplement piece that you all saw in February, and then, of course, our budget overview for parents. So those three together is what we'll submit to the county and ultimately to the state. And when we think of the LCAP, it really does include all of those, though when we think of the LCAP and you hear that word, it really is that third row of that 2223 Local Control and Accountability Plan. Looking back at what's happened in the current year, where we're still going, this just summarizes some of the key activities, and what we would just point out is that, you know, it's been a year where I think that, again, a silver lining from everything that's happened has been the fluidity between the years, if you will. So coming from last year's LCAP, it built right into the SRR three expenditure plan. So if you look at the SRR three plan, a lot of those actions align to our current LCAP. And now we're coming full circle back to a new LCAP within the same three-year cycle, and we're building from some of those as well. So we'll talk a little about aligning the SRR and the LCAP and having them reflect the actions together. And so, you know, we find ourselves, even though we had all those postponements and those fits and starts and one-time requirements, it really has kind of broken down the barrier between that academic cycle because we've come right from one year to another in midstream and in various processes, whether it was last summer or, excuse me, two summers ago, the Learning Continuity and Attendance Plan, and then this recent summer, the SRR three expenditure plan. There really hasn't been a time off or we're not doing some form of planning, and while that is taxing on the system, it has also been a benefit in terms of really, again, establishing fluidity and continuity across the years. And that's one thing that we'd hope to take into the future, whether or not there's a new plan this summer to hit the ground running and just keep going right through the summer. And as soon as we have, you know, the opportunity to take that breath, hit the ground running and not necessarily have that delay in the fall where we wait. I'd also just point out that we really have a great appreciation for our staff and colleagues across the system, because if you look at this chart, and I was reflecting earlier that each of these circles has come with a huge event in our world or our local context, whether it was Delta, then it was Omicron, and then we've had our recent, you know, time away from schools. And so it really has been this kind of series of challenges, and the fact that we're still here talking about improvement and planning is, I think, speaks to resilience itself, and that's not to say where, you know, anything's perfect, but I was appreciating that moment. We continue to engage, you know, that has been something that has been challenged by the circumstances, but I would want to point out that, you know, that fluidity has been helpful in terms of continuing to be able to build iteratively off the processes and continuing to really try to align those efforts. A note on continuity. We came from a former LCAP before the current one, which had the four goals, and we talked a lot last year around how did we, were we going to move from those? And this is our current LCAP structure with eight goals. And so a first key takeaway here is that we do expect to have largely continuity of those eight goals with the addition of some new goals. So we're not looking for those new goals to in some way restructure the entire LCAP at this point. And it is important to say that we are always writing new LCAP every year, but we're also within a three-year timeframe. So it's, both things are true at the same time. The goal is that you have a three-year timeframe where you're setting desired outcomes and you're pushing towards those, but each year we have the opportunity to add goals, to modify our outcomes, to modify our actions, to reflect what is the most current context. So what we want to just highlight that's new for you particularly to look at tonight are the three new goals that are in progress, also some alignment of the SRR three plan to the LCAP, some proposed reframing of some of our desired outcomes that is in progress. So you'll get to see some of it, and those are still conversations we're having with staff. And then also, where appropriate, we're working with staff to identify new actions or modify the actions that were in existence. And I did want to note, we're still maintaining that notation that you all suggested last year where next to each action, we're still putting continuing or modified or new, so there can be some tracking from the public of where those stand. So for new LCAP goals, and this kind of goes back to where we were anchoring on our statements, and we do have student groups, and we know that these are certainly not the only student groups that show performance gaps, so I did want to note that. But in terms of what has come from the state, several years ago, or a few years ago, some legislation came forward which established the requirement that if the district has identified for differentiated assistance, and that's one of those acronyms, those words, but student groups who have showed gaps on the dashboard, the California School Dashboard over time, if it's the same groups recurring over multiple years, we have to add an LCAP goal for those groups. Now, for us in SAC City, we have three groups, students with disabilities, homeless youth, foster youth, who have had that recurring performance gap. And so for these groups, we now have to add an LCAP goal. We do have the flexibility to add multiple goals or a single goal. In the case of working with staff and understanding where they saw this going, it really became clear early on that to add one goal and to try to bring all of those groups, and we would lose the specificity on what each of them were focusing on. And I think you'll see, when you see the three goals in the coming slides, that it really would have been lost. It would be hard. It would have generalized those intents to the point where we wouldn't have lost it. And so we are trading off length of the document for the ability of those goals to be more specific to the student groups. So I just do want to acknowledge that. The document is going to get longer. We do have to add the goals, but we're, again, choosing to add a goal for each of the groups rather than force it all into one. And I did want to note, there was just an announcement from the California Department of Ed recently. The coming dashboard is not going to have the performance colors because of, again, COVID interruptions, they will be reporting status. So we'll have more information on the coming dashboard. We still won't have quite that cadence of those performance colors until the following year. So Goal Nine is the goal that we're proposing to add, specific to students with disabilities. Really want to thank staff from Special Education for helping to craft this, and it's really focusing on students having standards-lined instruction that's enabling them to meet or exceed their state standards within the least restrictive environment, and really focusing on what does that look like for the system to do that, and there's a lot involved in that. And you can see here some of the actions that they're looking at, as well as digging down into some of those measurable outcomes. And again, these are in-progress goals, so they're continuing to refine these, looking at how many of our students with disabilities are participating in separate schools, what's the percentage of time they're spending in regular class in terms of how many students are at the over eighty percent, and how many students are under forty percent, really trying to drive towards state targets. Goal number ten is where we're focusing on our homeless youth. And I should say, a running theme that I'd like folks to focus on from these three goals is that each, you know, group that we're trying to address, the folks that are building these goals are looking at what is the foundational piece, right? And so having students spend more time in their LRE or their least restrictive environment is foundational to a lot of other pieces that we'd want to address. And so it's not to say that's the only thing that we want to talk about. It's not to say that it is the thing that's right in front of folks sometimes, but they're really trying to attack a foundational piece of the system. And similarly here, the idea that right now we have what is, what we would believe to be a chronic under-identification of our homeless youth. In SAC City, we're currently at a rate of somewhere around one percent, and really, if you read state national reports, I think the board's even discussed this, that we'd expect five to ten percent of our low-income youth. So we know that all things that are, if all things are equal, we would expect many more students in the system that need to be identified. And identifying a student or a family allows then our homeless youth services to connect them to all the appropriate supports, to give them the full range of services that we know they benefit from. And so our team is looking at what is the type of professional development that can occur, what kind of referral processes are we using, and starting to track how many students can we actually identify from that population that we do assume is unidentified. And again, it's not to say that's the only thing that we can be looking at for homeless youth, but it's a foundational piece, that if we don't identify and don't identify appropriately and accurately, we can't access the services. For our foster youth team, really looking at connecting them into academic services. That's a goal of all our students who show that they're below grade level are getting academic services and really seeing that as a foundational piece for additional things such as attendance, behavior and suspensions, and looking at doing some individualized case management as well. And those are things that are occurring different ways, but really focusing in on a new tutoring provision and being able to actually look at, you know, for students that are receiving tutoring, being able to track for every month of tutoring, how much academic growth are they making, really looking at that very refined and detailed level. So those, again, are the three proposed goals that we've built in response with the state requirement, but, you know, oftentimes requirements are pushing you to do good things, and there are examples of really focused goals for those groups. Now, we spoke earlier about the SRR three alignment, and this is a bit of a reciprocal process where we're coming full circle, where if you look at our SRR three plan and you go all the way to the left column, if you go find that plan, and it's there on our website, you'll see that it shows the LCAP action alignment. So actions that were placed in the SRR three plan were built, in many cases, to supplement or expand upon or grow LCAP actions. And now that we have this new LCAP coming online, we're trying to reflect very clearly where that's the case. So you can see, these are just two examples, but because the timeline is actually the same, too, right? This LCAP cycle goes through twenty-three, twenty-four. The SRR three cycle goes through twenty-three, twenty-four. So it's a very nice opportunity to sync its sequence up and show where they're aligned. And so in the case of our college and career readiness labs, that's something that didn't exist in the LCAP, but it is in the SRR three plan. It's now we're bringing it, excuse me, we're bringing it over to the LCAP to show the alignment within our Goal One, which is college and career readiness. And in the second example, we have an action for counselors, but we also supplemented that in the SRR three plan, so we're bringing that notation on to show that's an additional piece. And I will say that second row, that is not the entirety of the action statement, we're just showing that alignment piece. So if you went into the draft, you'd see the additional description of counselors. And a very small note, it's not certainly at the extent of the SRR three plan, but we're also aligning to the Expanded Learning Opportunities Plan, which you're going to hear about right after this, so just, I won't say anything more because you'll hear about it with much more expertise. And then also the educator effectiveness block grant, which you heard about in December, and really showing that recruitment and retention effort. So another key piece to feature here is what is a proposed reframing of some of our metrics? And this came out of a recent discussion with some of our educational partners, and really want to give them kudos. And the idea was that if you look at our current desired outcomes, on the left, you see a table here, and we'll show a full example on the next slide. It has disaggregation. Disaggregation is very important, and we're going to continue to disaggregate all of our outcomes. But the conversation was that when you look at a desired outcome, it becomes very numbersupy to look at a lot of numbers. You know, those groups have different end sizes. Also, it's not necessarily elevating the equity-based conversation of putting the focus on the student groups that have the biggest gaps. So what you see on the right is something that we worked with our partners and with staff to say, how could we craft goal statements, I should say, desired outcome statements that really are focusing attention on the student groups who we know need to make the most ground up, identifying an ambitious yet reasonable target for those groups? Because we know if we hit that number, that will be the most powerful way to drive up our all-student performance, because the students that are not achieving right now are in those groups predominantly, whereas some of our student groups are, in this case, very near, near the high nineties. That's not something that we might need to designate as many resources for. So it's really been a good conversation about how do you create desired outcome statements that then can inform where you place your resources? And so here you'll see from left to right what our current, you know, LCAP and the measurable outcomes would look like. You can see the description on the left of the metric, the student group breakdown with the year-by-year outcomes. Those are the outcomes we have for this particular metric. And then on the right side, you'll see what is our current desired outcomes and what we're looking at as a potential reframing. We've worked with our college and career staff, Christina Espinoza, to look at a lot of the Goal One metrics and device proposed outcomes. So if you looked in the draft materials attached, you'll see this has happened for Goal One, and then we're working with staff and in other departments to see where this might be appropriate for some of those other goals as well. It's not necessarily something that will happen for every case because it's not appropriate for every case based on what staff inform us of, but we're looking to make that switch. And as always, there's new actions, and, you know, in this case, we have three actions that are specific to students with disabilities, working with our special ed team to understand what are some of the things that they're going to be doing in the coming year that should be reflected in the LCAP. You know, in the case of, you know, special education, there's certainly a vast, vast array of things that they're doing that aren't necessarily all in the LCAP because they have their own planning processes as well. But really, in these cases, looking at behavior interventions and data management is something that aligns really strongly to the other activities in Goal Four, and it's nice to feature. Five point nine, this new action, the kind of professional learning that will be done to support staff being able to interface with our parents and guardians and caregivers. And then I would also note here that Goal Seven, if you recall, is our goal around revising, revitalizing our graduate profile. That's something that was intended for this year. Really, it's been now pushed back to primarily occur next year, so you'll see the change in that language to shift the timeframe. So next steps, really headed here towards the goal of June, to be able to approve and bring to the public hearing and for approval, and just continuing our development process, you know, with the time that we have remaining, and look forward to returning back here in the coming meetings.
Thank you so much. Do we have public comment, Mr. Heap?
We do have one comment. Mo Kashmiri.
Didn't Mr. Gladney also have a... No? Oh, okay. Mo Kashmiri left. Did I hear that? Oh, no, you said no? Okay. All right, we have no public comment. I open this up for board members. I do have a, well, I'm waiting for board members. I do have just a quick clarification question on, let me see what page it was. It was the outcomes, the potential outcomes. Sorry, I closed my page. Here we go. Page eighteen, desired outcomes, that was the wording. The eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, and twenty, twenty-one were those desired outcomes or were those actuals after the desired outcomes? And then the current is a desired outcome?
Great question. Those are our actuals. You know, for the current, the new template, which is the current template that they created for last year, they had us set desired outcomes for twenty-three, twenty-four. It was essentially a three-year out target, and we're working our way to then report annually how we're progressing towards those. The, I guess, we'll now say older LCAP that goes back to the twenty, nineteen, twenty and previous era, they would have us, you know, set targets for every one of those years, and districts were constantly recalibrating because you'd get out somewhere and then you might downshift. And this way, they really refocused to say, what's a three-year horizon? Where do you want to be? Let's work our way towards that. And then as the cycle rolls, if the same template holds, and that is a question, it's always a question, and then we then set another target three years out.
That's great. It's nice to see those numbers slowly rising as well as you look through that. That's why I asked a question if they were actuals or desired. I appreciate that. I just also wanted to say, you know, thank you to you and your hard work and our parents, our LCAP committee members who put in a lot of hours and a lot of hard work for our students. So thank you.
It is a true privilege to work with that group.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Member Morosky.
Oh, thank you. I'll be very quick. Thanks again, Mr. Ramirez Fong. I'm really pleased that we set up this process to have regular updates, and I just wanted to say I'm very, very supportive of the new goals being added. And I just wanted to say I'm very, very supportive of the new goals being added. I think they're, I think they speak to the heart of some of the most, the biggest challenges we face in our system and the kids we need to serve the most. I just, I had a quick question about, on Goal 9, the goal, you know, the way it reads, it's just like, kind of like, duh, like, of course, that's exactly what we want to do. But it does, it is a little like general for me. So I'm just wondering, and maybe this is a question for Ms. Bada, I'm not sure, but more just like what that, what that means? Like, how do you get there in terms of least restrictive environment? Like, is that something that?
I can, I can support with that quickly. I don't have a microphone. But what I would say, board members and Member Morosky, I think it's a fabulous question. Our overall work that we're doing in special education is to ensure that we're building a rigorous program at every school. You've heard me say this repeatedly, so that every student can attend alongside their grade level peers. We're working toward a fully inclusive district. Primarily, foundationally for that, we have to build MTSS. So even though this does sound general, it helps you to understand the full direction that we're going, breaking down some specific areas, including preschool, that we're working toward including preschool all the way through 12th grade. And foundational to that work, you'll see that it's MTSS. We have to build that at all of our school sites so that we can better support students in every single classroom. So I completely see what you're saying. And it does seem like, well, of course, we're doing that. But in Sac City currently, we're not.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it's, I think it's really excellent to, and thank you for that response. I really think it's excellent that we have it stated in black and white. Because I think that's, that's where the board has been. And we have some resources to invest and we're doing, we're doing MTSS. I think it's, it's great. So all of those, those little one-on-one individualized student supports add up to the metrics that we want to see. So really appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other board comment? Member, Member Wu? Is your microphone on?
I noticed that you have a page for acronyms. And here on the last page is our key terms. If you could add that to the acronyms with the explanation that you have provided, local control accountability plan is a three-year plan that describes goals, actions, services, things like that. That'll make the list of acronyms much more complete. I'm collecting these. Because CSBA doesn't have it. And the state of California has, Department of Education has one, but it doesn't have these terms. They're more like MOU is memorandum of understanding and things like that. So, like I said, please.
I appreciate that. And I'll note that we, in last, this year's LCAP, the current, which is now almost the old LCAP, we started our first attempt at a glossary, which has a lot of terms, and we're looking to improve that. So if any of you identify terms you'd like added to the glossary, we'll definitely do that as well.
Thank you. Member Garcia?
Thank you for the presentation. I think the LCAP is such an important document because much of our revenue is, you know, tied to the LCAP. In terms of Goal Number 10, specific to homeless youth, we know that generally, a state audit a few years ago found that generally districts under identify homeless youth. And I think one of the reasons, if I recall correctly, is that we often as districts or in an education setting, we're not asking sort of certain types of questions of our students or families because the definition of homelessness is much broader than how we generally think of it, right? It could be a family who doesn't have permanent housing because they're living with a relative on a temporary basis. That's somebody who would qualify as a homeless youth, right? It's not someone who doesn't have any shelter whatsoever or is living at a hotel or something like that. So I think the intentionality of really thinking of maybe the definition in a broader sense, I think we are going to see many of our students who would be eligible for additional services that they desperately need. And I think that is, that's a really good thing. It will also allow the district to receive additional funds to strengthen the services and programs that we have so that we can better support the students. So I just, I just wanted to, anyway, to lift that up because I think that after the pandemic, we have seen a lot of families having more housing destabilization. So I think we'll see many more. And then in relation to foster youth, this tutoring services, one of the things that I'm trying to gauge is, because we know that our students already had needs before the pandemic and they're only greater and deeper and more. Just trying to like, in my head, understand, okay, we need to hire more people, right? We're going to strengthen our programs. We need more people. And in terms of the tutoring services, I know there is, I also know that the workforce is limited, not only for Sac City Unified, but just in general across the nation. So how are we going to partner with some of our local community groups? Maybe this is the next presentation. For example, for tutoring services so that they can provide the one-on-one if it needs to be done after school or some other times. So have you thought through what that looks like? I'm just trying to get a visual in terms of the additional services available.
Very briefly, I know speaking to our foster youth services staff, they are working with an outside provider. But I definitely look forward to passing on, you know, this, this input of, you know, what other local kind of community providers could offer partnerships, you know, to enhance that potentially.
Right. And, you know, I know that some partner with, you know, like college students. It's a win-win. They get, you know, they could potentially get paid credits or whatever it is. And then our students benefit as well. So, but I just wanted to, to just thank you for the cross references too in Slide 16 in terms of what's in the LCAP and then how it aligns to the ESER. And the timeline, it just, it's, I feel like it's very streamlined. And yes, last year was a year of planning, this year too. But one upside to that is that there is a lot, there, every plan builds upon and not the other plan. So, so there's just a lot of clarity in terms of direction, I think. So, so thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Member Wu, you had your light on again? Was that a mistake? Okay, I got you. Oh, you turned it on again. I'll turn you off. All right. This is an informational item and we will hear more from back from you later. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Item 8.3, Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Grant Overview. Ms. Power and Mr. Carnero. Good evening.
Good evening, Board President Preacher, respected board members and dear superintendent. I am Manpreet Kaur, Director Youth Development. I would also like to introduce my colleague, Dr. Mark Carnero. And we, both of us will be co-presenting the information on Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. Next slide.
Is there the clicker over there on the?
And thank you. And here we have some acronyms. We would try to do our best not to use any acronyms, but please feel free to reference this page if you see any in the presentation. So why are we here tonight? Tonight, we are going to present some information on Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. This funding is new to the district and this funding is new to all of the districts. This funding requires board approval before the implementation of this plan, before we spend this money, before we make any plans, we need your permission. And we are going to provide an overview today and how it's going to impact SCUST families, our schools, our communities. And before I go further, I will not say that youth development do many programs like Student Advisory Council, American Indian Education, Leadership Programs. But in our tonight's presentation, we will be only focusing on Expanded Learning Programs and Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Grant. What is it? So one thing for sure, this funding only support before school, after school, summer programming. So this, with this funding, we can implement everything that will be outside the regular schedule of students. It was established in 21, 22. So we have received this funding this school year. But according to CDE's guidelines, we will be able to carry over to next year because this year, all districts are getting it approved and working on the plans. This funding requires us to prioritize programs in our lower income communities. And then we take our programs to maximize, maximum number of our schools and neighborhoods. So what kind of funding already we have and what kind of funding support after-school programs and for-school programs and summer programs? So the biggest funding part is, is this after-school education and safety, education and safety funding. This was initiated by Prop 49 in 2002. And this is an ongoing funding. We get renewed every three years. The next funding part we have is 21st Century Community Learning Centers funding initiated in 1996. It's ongoing, but every five years we have to compete and turn in the grants. And this last funding, but the one that we are going to talk more today is Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Grant funding. And this one is initiated in 2021. This funding is going to be ongoing funding and more likely to be increased in future. Who should be prioritized through, who is prioritized through Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Grant? All school districts or local educational agencies that have more than 80% of, or above the number of unduplicated students, those are the school districts receive higher allocation. And what is an unduplicated student? Who is considered unduplicated? There are three kinds of categories that fall in this category. English learners, eligible for a free and reduced price meal, and foster youth. These are the three categories of students that we can count towards unduplicated students. What is required through Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Grant? We must provide nine hours of programming when combined with in-person instructional time, including nine hours during intercession. So what it means, if regular day schedule is six hours, then we have to provide three more hours of expanded learning. It can be before school, it can be after school. So during summertime, we also have to do 30 days of intercession days. But each day, we need to give an option to parents of nine hours of programming. All three kinds of funding that I mentioned, after-school education, safety, 21st Century Community Learning Centers Grant and Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Grant, they are, all this should be one comprehensive program. We will not be differentiating saying this is after-school education, safety program. This is 21st century, no. This is all one program. All funding parts can be used to have one comprehensive program for students. We can, we can provide before school, we can provide after school at one site or multiple sites. So what are some of the essential components? Program needs to be aligned with after-school education and safety programs guidelines. What, whatever guidelines are under after-school education, safety programs, those should be adopted for Expanded Learning Opportunities Program too. Program elements are education, educational assistance for students, enrichment and snack and meals and suppers are very important. Some of the other things are integration with the school day, community collaboration, physical activity, fiscal accountability, all those reporting that we do to California Department of Ed. Plans should be reviewed every three years, including goals. And if we have to make any changes whenever, we need to come and ask for approval. So what do we have currently in our district, in our Expanded Learning? We receive 9.3 million in after-school education and safety funding and 21st century funding. That serves almost, that funding asks us to serve 5,000 students at 50 elementary, K-8 and middle school sites. And this funding does not include high school funding, that's separate. We also receive almost 500,000 in after-school education and safety and 21st century funding to serve 1,000 students for a six-week, six-hours-a-day summer program. When we received this funding, these were the guidelines that we have to provide six weeks of program for six hours a day. Three before-school programs are funded by 21st century grant. Our current ACs and 21st century grant, we get $10.18 per student for 180 days. This number is very important because you will see that later on Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Grant, how that grant is funded. How is this grant funded? Approximately per student allocation is $672. As I mentioned to you, the districts who have 80% and above unduplicated number of students, those districts receive higher number per student. So in a, we get almost 10.2 million, which is for 15,232-something students, which is the 72% of our 2021 ADA for K-6 students, TK through six students. So that way, when we multiply 15,000 to 32 by 672, we get 10.2 plus approximately. I'm rounding the numbers. So the state requires that, so what is the requirement for this 10.2 million? We have to offer our programming before school, after school, summer programming to all of our unduplicated students. Offer and then provide access to 50%, which means we have to serve and provide access to 76 to 7700 students. CD is, added guide is not released yet. So we don't know what other requirements will come in future. And they are working on it, so hopefully we'll get it soon. What, what do we already have that's in Sac City Unified? We have 16 before-school programs. We have 60 after-school programs, elementary and K-8. I also want to mention, we have seven high school programs too in our district. We have been doing summer matters programming for the last 10 years and serving 3,000 students on average each year. We have youth employment programs and we also partner with City Hall, Summer at City Hall. So these are all the just Expanded Learning Programs that are in our district. So how will ELOPA improve support to SCUST students and families? One thing that is already clear and CDE has made it clear that our students that are being served under after-school education and safety and 21st century grant, those students will be counted towards unduplicated number of students that are required to serve under this new grant. that we are required to serve under this new grant. So we will be able to serve additional students in our underserved communities. We will eliminate all the wait lists. We will offer Expanded Learning Programs to all the unduplicated students at non-grant-funded sites. We do have eight to nine school sites that are not Title I and they are not, they do not have Expanded Learning, after-school education grants and 21st century grants. So we will offer this programming at those sites. Provide Expanded Learning to transitional kinders and kinder student. Under our current funding, we do not provide services to transitional kinders. We do not provide services to kinders because our funds are limited. So now we will expand to both of these two groups. We will offer before, we will offer after-school programming to both these groups. And actually, we are very excited about these two groups. We will offer before-school care at all of our late elementary sites. Late start elementary sites means the ones that start at nine o'clock. We will work with the principals and see if their communities need this service. In our district, I looked at the number of late start school sites. I think it's either 25 or 26, I'm missing, I can't remember that. So almost 26 sites. So continuing, we will extend our intercession summer offerings. So we can run summer programs at more school sites with this funding. Expanding summer programs to, we will work with other departments to have more services for students. We can have social workers during summer programming, which is a good thing. So our students can have access to social, emotional learning or mental health services. We will provide additional support to students through certified and classified staff at our middle and high schools. Especially at high schools, our whole seventh period is run by certified staff. So with this funding, we can bring our certified teachers in our Expanded Learning Space to provide academic assistance, to provide tutoring, to provide small group tutoring, or to work with any students who need these additional services. So this is a big plus for us for elementary kids. And now I would ask my colleague, Dr. Camero.
Thank you. So as SCSD rolls out its ELOP programs, there will be four targeted areas of improvement that will be addressed in its evaluation. Specifically, we will target ELA, math, school engagement and social-emotional learning. For academics, we will measure CAS results to analyze how involvement in Expanded Learning Programs affects growth in ELA and math. In regards to school engagement, we will examine the amount of students who are chronically absent. We will also study social-emotional learning through lens of office discipline referrals and suspension incidents. Lastly, we will use surveys, focus groups, and interviews to gather qualitative data to better understand our community members' experiences. It is our hope that the SCUSD ELOP programs will support affirmed studies that highlight that Expanded Learning Programs can have positive impacts on student academics, attendance, and behavior. So in terms of the community groups that we've been engaging with in this planning process, in the development of the ELOP plan, we have made sure to welcome and include the voices of community members who have been directly impacted by the plan's implementation. We would like to highlight some of the direct contributions that some of these groups have made in development of this plan. The Student Advisory Council highlighted the needs to support arts-based programming centered in visual arts, music, and dance. Community-based organizations in conjunction with our summer advisory committees stressed the need to develop more district-supported sports leagues, STEAM activities, field trips, college exposure, arts development, and professional development for frontline staff. Internal SCUSD departments like Early Learning and Care Department have co-designed an extended care opportunity that will support TK and K students at multiple school sites. Facilities and operations have brainstormed ways to grow our custodial supports throughout all sites. And strategy and continuous improvement in collaboration with the Budget Department have helped to ensure that we remain deeply tied to LCAP efforts and are fiscally secure in our rollout. Do you mind if I continue? Do a timer, thank you. So what partnerships are necessary to successfully implement ELOP? In order to sustain ELOP efforts, we will need to continue our inter-district collaboration in connection to the broader community. The reciprocal nature of the collaboration has always been integral to the success of Expanded Learning Programs in SCUSD. As we continue to roll out our ELOP programs, we will continue to call upon the expertise of our community members, families, administrative teams, certified and classified staff members. And then finally, what is the connection between ELOP and our SCUSD guiding principle? As we implement the ELOP programs throughout SCUSD, we are to remain grounded in the superintendent and district's guiding principle of all students are given an equal opportunity to graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. We are confident that a well-planned ELOP program will help to achieve this goal by targeting our most vulnerable and disproportionately impacted communities. Our program will improve early engagement with our school system and provide a safe space for our students to learn and thrive. In addition, the academic interventions and supports in ELA, math, and SEL that will be offered in the Expanded Learning Space will aid in addressing learning loss amplified by COVID-19. So with that, I want to pass it back to Manpreet for some next steps.
So on May 6th, tomorrow, we will post the draft of our ELOP plan. Our Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan will be posted and we will make sure each one of you receive the direct link or the copy of the draft plan. On May 18th, we will be presenting to our district's English learner advisory committee. And then on May 19th, we will be bringing this plan on the consent agenda, asking for your approval. And on May 19th, if you would like us to come back and you have more questions, we will be more than happy to come back and answer any of your questions you may have. And now it's time for question answers.
Thank you so much. Do we have public comment, Mr. Heep?
We do have Terrence Gladney.
Gladney? Come on up. I felt like a game show host there for a second. Please stay.
Just for transparency, this year, my own organization became a partner and a supplemental provider from Miss Leadership Academy at two school sites, John Cabrillo and Sam Brennan, so elementary in the middle. But with that being said, I felt it was necessary to partner and it was really an opportunity to build on the work that I've been doing as a volunteer and through a self-funded fashion since 2009. And what I've learned from working with such a strong team of individuals is how to further grow youth voice about additional opportunities that exist. But a lot of the same things that I've been championing before I became a partner still exists. The fact that our youth development services department is primarily grant-funded. If there's sufficient grants to meet the needs of every school, then that's great. But our budget again should speak to our priorities. So the work that they do should be the foundation of how we build our budget. They engage students such as Board Member Zain. And she, I'm sure, well, I'm not going to speak for her, but on an outward lens, I would imagine that in that space, she has a lot more impact because her vote is not advisory. I would recommend that every person in the district integrate with this department because again, they're a lot more connected than a lot of our other people that aren't at school sites. So many youth stand on the shoulders of people like Manpreet, people who came before them like Britt Erby and Jamil Pugh that I've worked with, Stacy Bell, and current soldiers like Dylan and Mema and Andrea and Gavin. It's really just a powerful team from which every person, whether in the district or out of the district, at a school site or at Serna could learn from. I asked that anytime they come forward, as a parent, I ask, and as a mentor of young people, young people of color or needed students, that anytime they come forward, it's authentic, and that you guys honor it and build and grow beyond what they're asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gladney. Do we have any additional comments? All right. Member Villa?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say, Manpreet, it's so good to see you without a mask too. I feel like I've seen you on school sites, but actually to see you, it's so nice. Comments are quick. This is such an amazing program. It fills my bucket knowing that we are going to establish something that's really going to impact so many families and students. I'm beyond thankful for this, so I just appreciate this update. I'm looking forward to moving forward with this. And I would love to come out and see anything that you guys are doing that you can invite me to. I'm sure the board would be interested as well. Keep up the great work, I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Member Garcia?
Oh wow, I've been waiting for some money like this for a long time. I am so excited because this is a huge investment from the state. There's a $5 billion commitment, this is just like a down payment. But the key is that it's ongoing money. And so, you know, with that, as I, similar to the prior comment, one of the things that I wrote on here was, what is the internal capacity to make sure that these programs get rolled out? And it's going to potentially increase from year to year as additional state money comes our way. So I'm just wondering if there's enough people in the central office to help roll these programs out and help support them. So, and I have other quick questions, but I'll let you answer that one.
So we have a pretty strong team and I have faith in all of them. We did a tremendous amount of good work during COVID times, implementing learning hubs, bringing students back, so I'm very proud of them. We also, our biggest strength is our community partners. So we work with them. And we did a request for qualifications application again this year. We recruited two or three more community organizations who are doing this kind of work. YAMCA is in one of them. So we are bringing onboard more community organizations who will be able to help and grow our programming. As far as our internal team at the district offices, we are few, but we are very strong. We can do anything, we don't worry about it.
I don't worry because I know you'll do a fabulous job, but I want to make sure that your office has what they need in order to do, because this is going to be ongoing funding. So every year, you'll get more money, right? So, and we know that the needs are great across the district. So I just want to make sure that I hear, that we hear when that time comes, that you need extra help.
Yes. We have five specialists and we have a coordinator. Coordinator direct all the five specialists. All those five specialists have almost 15 school sites because currently, we are running 68 programs at 68 school sites. So each one of them have 10 to 15 school sites that they oversee. But thank you, we will definitely keep that in mind. If funding keep on growing, of course, we will need more people to manage that funding.
Excellent. And one of the changes in the state law was that encouraging districts to partner with community-based organizations. So I know there's a big focus on that. I'm glad to hear that we have those relationships and opportunities. I do want to, then, my other question is, for those schools that are not eligible for these funds, because I have a few of those in my trustee area, I want to make sure that those community-based or those partnerships with our community groups are also available. Many of those through maybe the Forthar Program or the SAC Chinese Center. Those are fee-based. I just want to make sure that their needs are also addressed outside of this bucket of funds because the sites wouldn't be eligible necessarily for these dollars.
Yes, and we work very closely with Forthar and also Sacramento Chinese Community Service Center. They both offer fee-based services and our intent is to keep them and wherever we need fee-based services, so that we can offer those services. One thing I can tell you that this grant also allows us to continue our fee-based programming along with our grant-funded programs because this funding is specifically for undocumented students. So yes, to answer your question, yeah, we will continue making sure that fee-based services as needed are present at the site.
Okay, and then, I think sites or parents at those sites, they need, I don't know how the communication goes out to our parents, but they need to know that these options are available, they're fee-based, and that there's capacity to serve them as well. So it's just important for them to know that these opportunities are there for a fee. So, and then the last question that I have to, sports. Where does sports fit into all of this? I know that in, through ESSER, we secured some one-time funds to, you know, for elementary sports across the district for the next maybe two years. But this is ongoing money. Sports are really important for kids, to keep them engaged, to reduce chronic absenteeism, it increases, you know, academic outcomes. So I'm just wondering, where does sports fit into this conversation so that we can finally have sports for all kids across the district on an ongoing basis?
So one beauty of this funding is that we can fully collaborate with our school sites, with our certified classified staff, with our sports department, with those coaches at the sites. We can offer sports programs to our students and this funding can take care of paying those employees. So to answer your, so to say that, yes, it's ongoing and it does bring the opportunity for us to offer sports programming to our students and continuing having a part where we can have some funding to give these kind of enrichments, this kind of sports to our students. So yes, this funding allows us to provide for those kind of programs that will be run after school, like the way we do, like coaches, they teach. So yes.
It sounds like you also want to add, and then I have one last question.
Member Garcia, I think what I'd like to do is make sure that we follow up with the board. We could do it via board communication because you may remember that we were on the brink and actually, I think we did, and our sports program, I believe, for a year. And that, yes, it takes place after school, but it's part of the regular school day, if you will. It's a sports program that's part of school, not an after-school separate program. So youth development falls under the same reporting structure where athletics and our athletics director. So I'd like to just request from our team that we craft the B.C. that more directly answers the question of after-school programming that might be related to sports, separate from what you, I think, are referencing, which is when we expanded our elementary sports program, our volleyball and football programs and basketball programs and running and cross-country and other activities. I want to make sure that we're clearer to the board about how we might continue to expand those activities with or without these funds.
Okay. Yeah, I'm interested in making sure that sports stay, that we expand them, that they're in middle school and high school and that we grow those programs. And then at some point, I'd also like to understand, because I know this is just the Expanded Learning Opportunity, which is TK to six in some middle schools. I'd like to understand what's happening at the, like, middle school and high school because with the late start time, understanding what might be available before school at those, you know, in those grade levels. Because I think the need will be there, we just need to make sure that kids have, you know, options to be engaged in some way. So anyway, at some point, I'd like to hear what we're doing in that and with those grades. So thank you, and this is an exciting, an exciting opportunity. So thank you for presenting this plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Garcia. Member Morosky?
Thank you, I'm really excited as well. And all of those great outcomes, I think Member Garcia referenced about sports. I also want to apply to arts in after-school. So I was wondering, and you can, you can get back to the board if you want to chew on it more, but I would love to see, you know, how these programs can bring in arts, like all kinds. Theater, dance, visual arts. I know that there's a lot of that activity that goes on across the district, but to have that done in a more systematic way that, so I don't know what the conversations have been so far to include arts. to include arts in, in those programs.
So I can quickly tell you that we do have, we work with Krakarats Museum. They come during after-school programming to our school sites and work with students. We also work with Sacramento Theater Company. We also work with Northern California School of Arts. So we are really, we have worked with Clara Academy in the past too. So, so yes, we have a lot of options, but I understand we need more options for our students. The organizations we work with, sometimes they don't have the capacity to work with at that many school sites because we have a lot of schools, like 68 programs. And so, so we will keep looking for more organizations who do arts programming.
Yeah, okay, no, I appreciate that we have a lot of partners that, that work in our schools. So, and I think there's other ways to, to expand, you know, like Clara has some online activities that can be like led by staff who aren't artists, but you, you know, you, you can watch how to do a dance or, you know, and we, when we did the pass-to-class program, that was an online, like dancing program that, you know, you can kind of lead an activity even with, if you don't have those skills. So I just hope we can look for opportunities and I would look to see that in, in the yellow plan. So that would be my input there. And also just wanted to comment that I, for these programs, I really am excited that this is ongoing funding. I know we had, we had a lot of work to do to stand up programs really quickly over the last couple of years and it's always difficult to find staffing and to retain folks and to make sure that you can offer a high-quality program with staff who are, you know, adequately trained and stay year over year. So, you know, they develop those relationships. So I'm just really interested in seeing a, a very high-quality program that, and, and it's all, you know, not all, but a lot about the staffing. So I'm just interested in how we, how we create that. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Member Wu?
Like my colleagues here, I am really excited about these programs. I was wondering though, how are you going to be able to measure the effectiveness from the classroom to before and after the school programs?
So, and my colleague, Dr. Canaro did mention something, how we will be evaluating, but I can expand more on this. We have done that kind of evaluation in the past too and saw some positive results. The way we are thinking we are going to do, we will compare two groups of students, the ones who are in expanded learning and the ones who are not in expanded learning. And then we will see the chronic absenteeism rate, suspension rate, our students' grades. There are a lot of factors that play a part in a student's success. However, then we can see that expanded, students who are in expanded learning, if they are doing better, it means it's a factor and it's playing a part. And we may not be able to say students are doing good and they are coming to school every day because of after-school, even though it has been, research has shown that students who are in expanded learning, they come to school more often. And FEDs and CDE both have done research on it and it has proven again and again, students in expanded learning, less chronic absenteeism. So we will be able to measure the quality of the program. And with this quantitative data, we can also focus on qualitative data, like surveys with parents, students, with our teachers, the ones who will be teaching. We did that survey during summertime and we saw really good results and good feedback from our certified staff. So all those focus groups, surveys, and just looking at, is expanded learning a factor that is playing a part in students' better behavior, better academics? And if it's not, if, if it says that students who are in our, our expanded learning programs are not doing good, because it is possible, then at that time, we will have to go back and see how can we improve expanded learning? How can we improve the quality of these programs? So that is our plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, I think you can sense that there's excitement amongst this board and I can tell there's excitement amongst the staff as well. I just have, I, I know we could all give our wish lists of like, you know, what we would like to see, give you what, what are, you know, our, our jotted-down list, but I, I do have a question. I, I immediately thought of a program that we had in the district that was funded by board members through our discretionary funding called SHINE. SHINE is by the city of, city of, God, why can't the thing?
City of Refuge.
Thank you, yes. And, and SHINE is a girls' empowerment after-school group. And we have the Men's Leadership Academy. And I think we don't, I, I'm not, actually not sure right now if we have SHINE in any of our school sites, but I would appreciate if you could please look into that. Maybe if staff can get back to me and let me know. And if, if we're not able to fund it through this, I'd like to find another way. So if, if you could.
Sure, we can look into this and get back to you.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you both so much. We appreciate your time tonight. This is an informational item and sure we'll be hearing lots more about the great stuff that's happening. All right. Eight point four, amend appointment of board members to advisory subcommittee on common assessments. Oh, that's me. Just a quick change to, at the last board meeting, we put together some subcommittees on, one of them on common assessments. There was a, a quick change. Member Garcia, thank you for graciously giving up your seat. And I'd like to appoint Member Phillips to the assessments committee. Can I please get a motion? Wait, don't you want to, don't you want to move this? Student preferential vote.
Aye.
All right, superintendent roll call.
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Morowski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu? Member Phillips?
Aye.
All right, thank you so much. Item nine point O, communications, nine point one, employee organization reports, S C T A? See S C T A in the room? S C I U, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jim Riffle with S C I U. I'm a chapter steward and a member of the bargaining team. SCUSD classified workers are committed to making sure all of our students get the education they need and deserve. That is why, as the district's severe strapping, staffing crisis grew worse and worse, interfering with our ability to do our jobs and students' ability to learn in a safe, clean, healthy environment with the resources and support they need and deserve, we had to go on strike to get the district's attention. Our jobs have become more and more difficult as COVID has created complications and the staffing shortage has left us trying to do many people's jobs with too few hands on deck. However, we are still here despite the challenges because we truly care about SAC City students and love the work we do. As a union, S C I U ten to one's desire is to collaborate with all of our partners, teachers, administrators, the school board and families in a constructive collegial way since we all should have the common goal, educating SAC City's children and looking out for their well-being. We must quickly come up with a plan for our students to make up the eight days that were, that they lost while we were on strike as district administration and the school board stalled, delayed and unnecessarily prolonged a strike that could have been avoided if they had come to the bargaining table in good faith from the beginning. We are dismayed to see the district once again engaging in the same kind of behavior that led to the strike, delaying, stalling, refusing to schedule meetings or showing up unprepared as the window to come up with a plan gets shorter. We have an opportunity to make up some of the lost time on Thursdays, yet with each Thursday that goes by without a plan in place, we are losing that opportunity. The district's failure to compare, meet, provide required information, and in short, fulfill their own duties in this process is wasting valuable time and potentially millions of dollars that could be going to student instruction, support and resources. The district needs to take this as seriously as we do and come to the table with the information requested and needed to reach an agreement and put a plan in place. The school board has an obligation to make sure the district's administrative team does what they need to do to get this done. As was the case during the strike, the school board seems to defer to the same administrators and council who caused the strike in the first place rather than intervening. Thank you.
Do, would you like to finish up or?
I have just a couple more minutes.
Couple more minutes or a couple more sentences?
Yeah, I have a couple more minutes.
You could please just rush it up, go right ahead when you finish up your thoughts.
I am imploring you as a longtime district employee who works with some of the district's most valuable kids to step in and direct the administrative bargaining team to get serious, prepare and come to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right. TCS? Teamsters? U P E? All right, nine point two district, did we have any public comment on any of that? Mr. Heep, okay. Just nine point two district advisory committees, community advisory committee. Good evening.
Hello again. So just an update from the community advisory committee. First, I'd like to give a brief recap of our last meeting, our April meeting. Part of it was a recap of a conference that I had an opportunity to go to along with several district employees. Our subcommittee director, Gio Lenaris, was very gracious to let me go in his place, which speaks to his desire to involve the community and parents, so thank him again publicly. At this committee, or this conference was about alternative dispute resolution. We learned a lot there and there are some great principles that we should definitely implement in our school district. Our special ed department is often at odds with its parents and it's not productive. You end up in a negative spiral where people fighting against each other rather than coming together, when while the students aren't getting what they need. One parable, I guess you would say, that was at the keynote at this conference, was a story of an orange. I'll try to tell it briefly. There is one orange, two people want it. In order to handle that dispute, you could cut the orange in half and everyone is half satisfied. Or you could talk to them, identify their interests and find out, actually someone wants to zest the orange because they're making a cake. The other person wants the orange juice because they're trying to increase their immunity. So, you know, it's not going to work always, but there are times when coming together can really improve things and move things along better and give everyone what they need. So we're looking forward to hopefully getting some of that going in our special ed department. Another update that I wanted to give is that we have our next community advisory committee meeting coming up on May 24th. We are rescheduling it a week past when originally it was on the website, but that'll be posted soon. This will be our meeting for voting for our board, or not board, our officers for next year. Currently, all of our positions are available. And at our last meeting, we, we took nominations and we did not get very many. So we have many positions that are available. We would definitely like to encourage the district to support this and also parents and community members to come out because it's very important to have a strong C I C to support our case of special ed. Positions that we don't have nominations for yet are chair, vice chair, secretary, treasurer and possibly a member-at-large. So thank you again and please continue focusing on our students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, district English learner advisory committee. Local control accountability plan, parent advisory. Mr. Gladney?
I am Terrence Gladney and L cap PAC member appointed by board member Phillips. And I wanted to provide our update. Since our last update, we had a meeting in March where we had a presentation on the universal TK that's coming down the pipeline and our discussions were focused around prioritization of school sites with the greatest needs that serve the populations of students who are often disenfranchised and don't have access to pre-K opportunities. But also looking at how school sites would be impacted by those and the transportation needs and other gaps that exist to make that accessible to those needed, needing students. And we also had a presentation from the English learner department and we learned about the, the master plan and its development. And what we've done in our space is added a standing agenda item for the English learner department to come and present to us so that we can maintain a connection there and also have a better connection with the D-LAC space since those are two necessary components of our L cap. In April, we reviewed our draft L cap materials using the existing framework around our recommendations that we previously presented to you guys. And, and just as a reminder, the key lenses through which we're looking included systems for accurately and regularly evaluating student performance and progress, addressing learning loss and closing the gaps, both academic and social, strategic partnerships to build capacity, which has been referenced a lot of times tonight, leveraging community-based organizations and other partners that have greater capacity than we do within the district. But also just leveraging their vetted ability to serve communities that we're supposed to be prioritizing and targeting and just understanding that they a lot of times have a lot deeper and, and greater relationships than we do as a school district with those communities of need. And they also have a, just, just a more trusted relationship. And also along those lines as well, increasing adult support in classrooms and the elimination of vacancies, finding more creative ways to build pipelines from school sites to the classroom in terms of whether through the classified space or again through community-based partners and building pipelines with adults that have relationships already with our students and possibly buil, building recruitment pipelines into our classrooms to fulfill some of the needs that we have for, for teachers and, and other trusted adults at our school sites. And then also the provision of mental and social emotional supports, mental health and social emotional supports. And from that discussion, we also talked about the, the student support centers that currently exist at school sites and the need for more. And what that looks like is we pursue opportunities such as community schools, but also in the framework of what that looks like with our current district layout in terms of open enrollment and specialized programs, how does the community schools model and these other student support centers, what does that look like?
Thank you. You might want to stay up because you're coming up. Student advisory council, we have any, no, okay. African-American advisory board, Mr. Gladney. And I, I allowed, I was asked to give you an additional three minutes, which I have allowed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're going to start with the video. Last night, we had our general board meeting. We had a cadre of district staff, including the superintendent present. There was a video that was supposed to sort of preface our discussion to sort of set the tone. But it, it may have happened for a reason that it didn't get played last night, but we would like to share it not only for each person that was in the virtual space last night, but also everyone here in attendance because it really is a powerful.
That wasn't it?
True, no.
It was showing on that thing. The sound won't play? Okay, we, maybe we can have the video sent out to each board member?
Okay.
I apologize about that.
That's okay. And also if we could share with everyone those in attendance last night, some people need to leave early in terms of district staff. But we do thank you for granting us additional time. If I could summarize it, what the video speaks to is our why. We often think about what we need to do in specific positions, but we don't often speak from such a passionate standpoint as to why we're doing it, right? What is the thing that drives us to do it even when it's difficult? In the space that I'm in, I'm District Accountability Chair for our District Accountability Committee. Many long nights, a lot of research around numbers. I know why I do it, right? I do it for my biological children, the children that stand on my shoulders at the school sites I've visited and I represent and come across that I coach and mentor. They are why I do it when it's difficult, when I feel unheard. They're why in the Black African-American Advisory Board space we continue to trust and have faith in a system that has so often and continues to underserve, disregard, stomp on, oppress our ancestors, our own children in this day. And when things feel hopeless, as they often do within this space, if we look at the LCAP plan, there was talk about growth in graduation rates, but I see a lot of regression. In 2021, African-American students went from a pandemic experience in which a lot of requirements were loosened, and we saw graduation rates, quote unquote, which again, let's provide context. This says graduation rates for students within four or five years, not our expected outcomes. I see in 1819, 77%. It went to 82.4% in a relaxed environment and regressed to 75.3%. So we start talking about those students that bring actual dollars into our district, extra dollars, but also bring extra trauma, extra needs, extra stories. I stand on the shoulders of parents who don't stand in front of this lectern. I stand on the shoulders of people who did have the strength to fight through a system and push me through and show me how to navigate channels where it didn't look like there was a crack of light coming through. I stand on the shoulders of people that uplifted me on their shoulders and put my needs before their own. I ask, and we ask, that you guys tap into the heart and side of your chest and do the same. Serve those students. We have been granted extra resources to fulfill their needs. When we are in that space, we talk more freely. We talk bluntly. In this space, I often have to feel buttoned up. But in the spaces we're trying to provide, a narrative and a space for people that look like me, people who have students that may not have access to resources and other students that look like me experience on a day-to-day basis. So while the format in which messages are delivered might not fit what is deemed to be the norm or what's the expected rhetoric or way to operate in this space, those stories really are the underlying foundation of the numbers that we're looking at in pieces of paper like this. The stories that are trying to be compressed and oppressed in hundred or hundreds of page documents like the LCAP. We're currently undertaking listening sessions in which we are providing a safe space for parents to share their stories. So that when we share numbers like Julius Austin and myself did when we came forward and presented, those are testimonies and those are people. Those aren't numbers, they're not data points. They're people's lives, they're students' futures. So when we come, as we did previously, and present a number of failures on the part of this system, we expect more than to be listened to or to be heard. We expect action. When we hear that there are not common assessments sufficient to capture data, common assessments are miniscule in the framework or in the lens or in comparison to the decades of failure that systems like Sac City Unified have created and continue to create. So I don't know what types of assessments you have, but look at the prison, you know, look at the prison pipeline. Look at those students. Look at these numbers in the documents that you guys have before you. Visit a school site. Come to our listening session on May 9th and hear parents' true testimony and true stories. You guys can unfold these numbers without any other assessment. Just open your heart. That's all you need to really just figure out what's actually happening. May 9th, we have two sessions, one from 12:15 to 1 o'clock, and another one in the evening. Because we understand that people have varying needs, we're trying to meet people where they are. We're trying to set the example for people that look like me and look like us. And we're doing everything that we can to make ourselves available. And we're trying to set a model for how this district should move forward, especially for those students that have been stomped on by the acronym SCUSD now, probably in the future, and in the past. If we could have that slide shown, I don't know if that PDF could be shown. If not, then it will be available on the district website. It's also available, we've distributed to parents. We've emailed families of Black and African-American students. Yeah. You know, my why is seeing students that aren't spoken for. My why is Board Member Zane, who often has a voice, but it just often sits hollow and just sort of floats in some Ethereum in this space because it's an advisory vote. Students aren't always first, maybe on paper, but in action. A lot of times, all you guys really need to do to do the right thing is just turn your chairs inward towards that young lady right there. We must do better, we should do better, we demand better. Again, we have many unanswered questions. We have many unanswered demands. Only you guys know when they will become answers and solutions. So if you guys have a mirror handy, take a selfie, whatever, that's where the answers lie because you guys have the votes, the gavel, and the power to make those changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Item 9.3 Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Pritchett. Good evening, everyone. Let me begin by just wishing everyone a happy early Mother's Day, especially for our board members who are all mothers here and the many, many hundreds of staff members, hardworking mothers on our staff, as well as, of course, our hardworking moms in our community who trust us with the care of their children every single day. I hope that each of our mothers will have an opportunity this weekend to relax and spend some quality time with your loved ones. I do want to just mention that because we heard about the matter during public comment, I do want to provide an update about our continued efforts to recover student instructional time due to the recent strike. Our district, of course, finds itself in an unprecedented situation based on the length of the labor strike, the need to close our schools for instruction, and the effort now that we have begun to try to address to recover that missed instructional time, over 2,400 instructional minutes that were lost during the strike. Let me just say that it's a challenging and very complicated process because of the unique circumstances that we faced during that strike with many factors that we are trying to consider. And I'll just give a few examples. For example, how do we ensure that students are provided meaningful instruction to make up for the eight days of lost instructional time? How do we ensure that we have sufficient staff to provide meaningful instruction and supervision for our students given the continued staffing challenges that we face? And the fact that we already end our academic year later than any other district in this entire region? And that this would take us, of course, to the end of the June month? How do we show consideration for the impact on retirement benefits for affected staff? And of course, in the immediate, which is what we are hearing, and I want to make sure that people understand that we recognize, how do we minimize the scheduling impacts on families who are waiting for clear answers from us? We've been working with SETA, including meetings this week, on Tuesday, yesterday as well. Additionally, and to the factors I just mentioned, our team has been meeting with representatives from the California State Teachers Retirement System, better known as CalSTERS. We also met today with CalPERS, which cover many of our classified employees' retirement programs. And we've been meeting to review the proposed language and options for making up the instructional days while working together to fully explore and understand the implications of the makeup days on teacher retirement benefits. Specifically, CalSTERS has advised us whether the options being considered will be sufficient to meet its requirements for a full year of service credit. And one of these meetings, in fact, with CalSTERS was a joint meeting with representatives from our district and from SETA recently. The latest exchange of proposals took place yesterday, and I invite our families to view and read all the proposals for resolving this situation. They're all posted on our website, just as we've been doing for some time now. Under the Negotiations tab, we promise we are doing everything we can to make it easier for our users to find more efficiently. But I do want to assure our board and our families that we are working toward a responsible agreement that best serves our students and also will commit to providing another update tomorrow to our families. On a separate item, board members and community members, this coming Saturday, there will be a celebration of life for former state Senator and Education Secretary Gary Hart, who many of you, of course, knew. Most know him for his time at the Capitol, but to us here in Sac City Unified, he was a former teacher who dedicated his post-public life to serving our students. Some of you may know that after leaving elected office, Mr. Hart chose to teach history and English in a blended humanities program. He formed that JFK, known as PACE, which is the program in America and California exploration. His expertise was always in demand professionally as he continued to serve on government committees. He would take the stipends from these committee services and donate them to the PACE program to assist with their fundraising. And of course, he was influential in getting Sac State to host our program and our students during the summer at an affordable cost to us. We are deeply saddened by the loss of Mr. Hart, who served as a mentor to me for over 25 years. But his legacy will continue in our district through the positive change he led at JFK and the students he inspired to succeed. The month of May means it's getting toward the end of the school year, as you know, board members, and it becomes a time to reflect on all the good our staff have accomplished for our students. Monday was the start of Teacher Appreciation Week, and we ask our community to be sure to thank our dedicated staff of teachers. I just want to take a moment to recognize two teachers in particular for their accomplishments. In April, two of our Luther Burbank teachers, Mr. Thomas Biondi and Ms. Diane Bennett, were selected from a nationwide pool of applicants to attend the National Endowment for the Humanities, some opportunities there. This continued development and accomplishment of our educators on the national level is very commendable as it will turn in and benefit and enrich the education received by our students. Also, National Principals Day was on May 1st, and I hope that you'll join me in thanking all of our colleagues who have gone way above and beyond this year to support our students. We've relied on them unlike any year before. Many of them, as you know, have been in classrooms and other support roles to keep our schools open, especially during that Omicron wave in the beginning of this year. I'd also like to acknowledge that next Thursday, May 12th, is National School Nurses Day. And many of you, of course, have seen the benefits, especially during COVID. But beyond that, we just want to thank our nurses for being there to provide care and services for our students in times of their greatest needs. And finally, as I close here, I do want to just mention that we are very fortunate that this is our second consecutive in-person meeting as a board. But it's also a reminder that COVID has not gone away. And we are still seeing positive tests every day. As of today, we have 148 active cases in our district. And as we have been aware, we've been doing a lot of contact tracing to activities that have taken place throughout the district. I just want to mention that as we head into the final weeks of our school year, we also have wonderful events that I hope we can continue, athletics, dances, graduations, of course. Our students and their families deserve to experience these rites of passage. We will continue to have vaccine testing requirements in place for these large events. We will continue to encourage events to be held outdoors whenever possible. For indoor gatherings, though, we will continue to strongly encourage masks, and we will enforce our mask-wearing mandates. Finally, I know many of you are wearing these. Today, I am too. Of course, May is Mental Health Month, and this is a very, very critical topic for all of us. We've seen the tremendous negative impact the pandemic has had on mental health. I see Director Victoria Flores, who's a champion of this effort as well. We encourage everyone to not ignore their feelings and emotions and to seek counseling or other help. We're excited, very, very excited. And I'll ask Ms. Flores to send a B.C. on this, a new partnership with an organization, Care Solus, that will provide a much-needed service to our students, staff, and their families. It serves as a go-between for finding mental health and substance abuse counseling and removes many of the barriers that can prevent people from getting help. They offer services in every language and offer assistance to everyone regardless of insurance coverage. And we think that this is going to be a wonderful service to our families here in Sac City Unified. And just two last things. This weekend is the annual East Sacramento Garden Tour created by David Lubin Elementary. Maybe Member Garcia will say something during her report. But I'm sure she'll join us in inviting our community to join this Saturday. And the last thing, Sac City is a partner in a series of community fairs that will be coming to every trustee area in our district over the coming months. The first one is taking place at Luther Burbank on May 21st. I hope our community will join us. And in the absence of Member Rhodes, who couldn't be with us today, I just want to invite you, as I'm sure that he would be doing the same thing during his report. So in his absence, I want to just encourage all of us to try to be in space with our families in that area at Luther Burbank on May 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. 9.4 President's Report. Thank you, Superintendent, once again for your report. And I just kind of want to tap into that a little bit. We especially appreciate the update[1688.33] We especially appreciate the update about the district's work to address the learning time that our students have lost during the eight-day strike by S C T A and S E I U. I want to underscore how important it is to make up for the learning time that our students lost with, as the superintendent said, meaningful instruction. It is not enough to simply log minutes to meet a state requirement unless our students actually get the benefit. Our students already lost so much valuable learning time when our schools closed during the pandemic. They need more time in the classroom with their teacher, not the less. And I know how hard the district is working to reach agreements with our labor partners. In order to keep our schools open so we can make up for this lost learning time, we need to reach agreements with our affected labor partners. This will ensure that we'll have enough teachers, principals, and all the staff who provide critical services, including bus services and nutrition programs. At the same time, families in our district want and deserve certainty immediately about the schedule for the rest of the school year and for the summer school classes. All of us board members have heard from our families, our community members, who are growing impatient. They want to be able to plan for summer childcare, activities, and family vacations. I strongly please call on our labor partners to work constructively with the district to reach an agreement on how we will make up for this lost learning time for our students as soon as possible. The bottom line is that our students lost valuable learning time during the strike, and they deserve that learning time, and we must provide it. There's a couple other things I wanted to say. I know the superintendent mentioned some upcoming events. I do want to invite the community. Rosemont will be hosting their Essence of Rosemont. It finally came back after COVID. It'll happen tomorrow evening. It's open to the community. It's a very fun, free event for families to attend. And I really want to just uplift what the superintendent said about May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Our students, our staff, and our communities have endured so much over the last two years. When I came in and I saw the green ribbons, it was a reminder of the things that are happening all throughout the nation, but right in our schools: the bullying, the fights, the self-isolation, the attempted suicides. I heard, I think it might have been Victoria that said this, but it reminded me of "it's okay to not be okay." I'm going to repeat that. It's okay to not be okay. If you see someone and you think they're not okay, reach out to them. If you don't hear from someone, reach out to them. Adults, children, everybody. Right now, we all have to be here for each other. And thank you, Superintendent, for honoring Gary Hart. He was such an impact into our communities, and I would like to take the opportunity to adjourn at the appropriate time in his honor. That is all with my report. 9.5 Student Member Report. Student Member Zhang.
Today is the first board meeting of May, and May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Unfortunately, there is no resolution recognizing and celebrating this month today, nor wasn't mentioned, but I would like to use this time and dedicate it to our AAPI students. Throughout history, we have faced racial discrimination and microaggressions. Even modern day with COVID and Asian hate crimes, it has been a difficult time for AAPI folks and especially students. Our district is such an ethnically diverse school district, and it is essential for us to have representation in district leadership, in school classrooms, and in school staffs. I am proud to be able to represent our district student body as a member of the Asian community. I like seeing AAPI clubs and other organizations recognizing and celebrating our AAPI students. I desire to see us validating a wide range of cultures and different heritage within the AAPI community. I would like to end with thanking our students for your participation in school and being tough through everything in the past few years. You are valued, welcomed, and accepted in our district and in our campuses, not only in May, but every month and every day of the year. I hope to return to the next board meeting with a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9.6, information sharing by board members. Do we have any, any of the... Member Murawski?
I think that's a wonderful idea, Student Member Zhang, so look forward to seeing that on the agenda, and I'm sure the superintendent can work with you and appropriate staff so you can bring it forward. That's wonderful. And I was just reading "They Called Us Enemy" by George Takei yesterday. It's a great graphic story about the... I mean, not a great story, but a great rendering of the Japanese internment and the atrocities that happened. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind us all of it's the big day of giving. It's not over. I was able to, you know, if you're in a position to be able to support some of our amazing nonprofits, I was able to give today to some nonprofits that support our students, so just wanted to remind you. It's not too late. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. Member Villa.
So obviously, there's a lot of challenges that our district is facing right now, and I know it's easy to get muddled into those dark waters. We're all frustrated. As a parent, I'm frustrated. I apologize that we don't have updates to give to our families about what's going on, but just like many had said, our president and superintendent, we are working really hard to get to an agreement on this matter. But I'm going to focus on some positive things, because that's where I come from, the space. Let's talk about the good things that we're doing. One, I just want to say graduations are coming, and I've talked to so many principals, and they have some great plans, drive-throughs. Some of the schools have not had graduations in person since 2019, so everybody's really excited. They're creating these great events on the school sites, like I said, drive-bys. Parents come in. I just received an email from another principal talking about, you know, we just need a little extra water, but other than that, everything's great and ready to go. So I'm very excited to take part in some of those upcoming events next month. Two, superintendent had mentioned it, and I'm sure Member Garcia will as well, but I'm really excited for the May 21st and 22nd events at Tahoe Park and Luther Burbank. You know, student artists painting murals at their school site is powerful. They're going to see those every day, and I'm really looking forward to... There's going to be musical events and hands-on artists, teaching kids different techniques, different types of food at both events. And again, that's a community event. I'm excited to visit both of those sites. It's going to be a really great thing to actually see our community again on school sites celebrating our campuses. I also, this is something that I am really excited for, the summer construction list and some of the things that we're going to be able to do on our school sites this summer. Playgrounds will be updated, shade structures added, HVAC units will be updated, water bottle stations, the Hyrum Johnson work that's happening. So there's a lot of things that our kids are going to come back to school and see these improvements on their campuses, and I'm really looking forward to seeing that, something we should celebrate. Again, Resolution 3267 that we passed in April, that ballot initiative passed, we have enough signatures, and in November, it will be on the ballot, and that's offering art and music to every student in public education. That is extremely... That makes me extremely excited, because I think art and music is something that can really impact and change. Not every child focuses only on math. They need the art component. That's very important to me. And then a funny story that I'm just going to tell, because I thought it really filled my bucket today, was walking my dog on my lunch break, and I saw all of these students in my park in Colonial Heights. So I walked over and started talking to a few of the adults and students, and they're from New Joseph Bonheim, and they had a field trip today, and it was a picnic, and they were playing with a basketball and football, and everybody had lunches out, and kids running around on the playground. And I have a really big dog. I have like a 150-pound dog, and so all of these kids are coming over and loving on my dog, and I heard a few of them run away and said, "I can't believe I just pet a lion today. I'm going to tell my mom that." And I said, "He's not a lion. He's actually a dog." Like, "That's the biggest dog I've ever seen." But they came over and snuggled my dog and then went back and ate their lunch. So I left walking out of the park. I'm like, "That is such a great experience, just to see them back in the park and having field trips." So again, positive things. I know things are hard, but I'm going to continue focusing on the good.
Thank you, Member Villa. Member Garcia.
Thank you. So thank you for mentioning both of the events I was going to mention, but first, I want to recognize this week as Teacher Appreciation Week, so I just want to thank all the educators who are doing a lot of hard work this year. And then thank you, Superintendent, for mentioning East Sacramento Garden Tour. This is a really important event and very popular event for David Lubin. It's a very walkable tour where you walk from home to home in East Sacramento, and you just are blown away by the gardens that you get to see. So just a lot of fun, and it's always on Mother's Day weekend, so it's just fun to walk around. And then thank you, Board Member Villa, for mentioning the Tahoe Elementary Multicultural Arts Festival. That'll be later this month on the 21st and 22nd. Not only do you see live art at work, it's a very family-friendly event, so they'll have taco... I mean, not taco trucks, but food trucks and all sorts of great stuff. So if folks are interested to join us, that would be a lot of exciting, exciting work. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 10.0, Consent Agenda. Do we have any public comment on consent? Terrence Gladney? I see you getting up.
I have a few, so it probably will be easier. I hope not to use all of those minutes. And if you guys are indulging me, I would actually like to start with like 10.1 I and work my way back up.
Sure. Go right ahead. How many items were you...
Six, I think. Is it six?
Maybe five minutes? Five minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. If you need more time, just go right ahead.
Yes, five.
On 10.1 I, I remember the first school board meeting I went to was dealing with the local school site issue, was like the last day of school, left my son's graduation and came to this very space. And if I recall, like every board meeting at the end of the year has always been like the day of or the day before. So what I would sort of project, based on the revised change from the 2nd and the 16th to the 9th and the 23rd, is that there is anticipation that there's going to be an extra week of school, and while I understand it's negotiated, if that's sort of just like the vibe, if we could somehow just maybe just tell parents to hopefully prepare for that without saying that there's been an agreement, if that's kind of what's anticipated, I don't know, but that's the way it appears. On 10.1 H, we've talked in the LCAP space about being forward-thinking and sort of like operating, you know, in advance, especially around the school calendar, and I'm looking like we have a month left and we're approving the calendar for next year. One of the recommendations we had was around the ongoing issue of moving our school year up. If we could start looking at the 23-24 school year now and start those discussions now and just see what we need to do to move that up to better align with the funding cycles, but also to better align with other neighboring districts so we can be more competitive in hiring, I think that that would be prudent. 10.1 D, Sutter Middle School. I didn't know this when I just saw the item, and it again reminded me that there's supposed to be discussions about renaming the school to be more reflective of the Native Americans who suffered at the hands of John Sutter. I've not yet heard an update on that, but I keep seeing it in all of these different spaces. But in looking at the details of the item, I see that there's going to be 110 students going to Boston with four, I think, like 21 adult chaperones, four teachers and 17 chaperones. San Brandon has 328 students total. We're sending a third of their entire population to another state. So when we talk about outcomes for students, I would like to know... Well, I know the answer, and we know the answer, but you know, when are we really going to look at the impact a zip code of attendance or residence has on students' outcomes? Is every other middle school taking a trip even out of Sacramento? Is every other middle school even taking a trip to the Capitol? We're talking about civic engagement. You know, proportionality, I mean, like, I don't understand how we have a middle school with 328 students, but we have another middle school with... 10.1 C, again, I see that that's aligned with college career and life-ready scholars. I brought up at the last meeting, I think the only difference was last time it was in closed session, and now it's in consent. Again, the language that we speak and the language that we write can dictate outcomes. Again, expulsion's not aligned with being college career or life-ready, unless we're talking about a life in prison or criminality. 10.1 B, Personnel Transactions. I'll take a moment to name all of my elementary school teachers. Mrs. Frost, Ms. Stevenson, Ms. Kuway, Mr. Irish, Ms. Raguth, Ms. LaRue, and Ms. Singleton. Those are my K through 6 teachers, in the same way my daughter's teachers were, Mrs. Levy, Mrs. Marquez, Ms. DiLoretto, Ms. Wong, Mrs. Chondo, Mr. T, and Ms. Smooth. My daughter is going to be going to UC Davis, but when she started in this school system, she was on the heels of losing her older brother. And Ms. Levy was her kindergarten teacher. She's listed in the personnel transaction. She's retiring at the end of this year. She did a masterful job of navigating that space with my daughter and allowing her social and emotional well-being to thrive. But also, she built a space where my daughter's friends are still connected because of the experience they had in kindergarten. Mrs. Levy and I have not always seen eye to eye on everything, but we've always been able to have open and honest communication and a relationship of trust, and there is a hole to fill at Cabrillo, but in our district. Mrs. Chondo is also on that list, my daughter's fourth-grade teacher. She provided safe space for my wife to reintegrate into the school and be around children in that classroom, and provided a safe space for my wife to grieve through helping other children. Mrs. Chondo and I have shared many moments together through the Parent Teacher Home Visit Project, and you know, in trips and national conferences and so forth. I consider her a dear friend, and you know, I just want to uplift them in this space and just remind us, if we are talking about good things, putting someone's name on a personnel transaction is not the way to do it, because that's the way that our scholars are often recognized, just as part of a list. Our teachers are superheroes. They have fulfilled the needs of so many children and parents and families, but also just they have held the district on their backs. So in this moment, in this time and space, I want to uplift Ms. Levy and Mrs. Chondo and just tell them publicly, thank you, and thank you to all the other teachers that have impacted my daughter and so many other scholars. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Terrence. And I'm sorry, did you just say that your daughter is going to UC Davis next year?
Yeah.
My heart just about ripped open, because you know I've known your baby since she was a little one.
Yes.
I was...
Yeah.
Congratulations.
And the reason that I wanted to, you know, I'm where I am. I remember my teachers. I remember some principals. It's the people that are closest to our scholars that impact their lives the most directly. You know, I don't remember any of my school board members. I don't remember any of my superintendents. So let's all remember the lane that we're supposed to be in, and let's uplift the people that are really driving our students down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. All right. Item 11.0, Business and Financial Information Reports Received.
President Pritchett?
Yes.
You need to take action on 10.1 Consent.
Oh, I am so sorry. I was so distracted by Leyla going to college. Student Preferential Vote.
Yes, on all open-session items.
All right. Superintendent Roll Call?
Member Pritchett?
Aye.
Member Garcia?
Aye.
Member Murawski?
Aye.
Member Villa?
Aye.
Member Wu?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Item 11.1, Business and Financial Reports Received. Item 12.0, Future Board Meetings, Dates, and Locations, May 19th and June 9th. And I will take a motion to adjourn in memory of Mr. Gary Hart. I have a motion in a second. Student Preferential Vote?
Aye.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Good night, everyone. Happy Mother's Day.